Take seats, please, we'll get started again. Alright, the next item on the agenda is to announce the interim emergency manager named by Region 22 Board members. Tim, come on up. I knew we'd keep you here just a little bit longer.
That's alright. So, the Region 22 Board of Directors did appoint Ashley Hopkins as the interim emergency manager until such time as a permanent replacement can be found. So, I would like Ashley to come up, introduce herself, tell you a little bit about herself. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I think I've met almost everybody. I don't know if I've met Mark.
No, I don't know.
I don't think so. But, I'm Ashley Hopkins. I started working here this September, will be two years. But, I'm part-time, so really only one year, is how I explain that. I'm really excited to be in this, you know, position. And I'm looking forward to getting the right person hired to replace Tim, just continue to support the office. He's done a lot of great work, getting all the agencies together, working together, moving in a forward, you know, with training. That's been really, really huge. And I know the county has made great strides with their ICS and IMs training. I was just talking to Heather that we're one of the only counties that really gets that done. And I know that there's a lot of work that went in to Tim getting that process started with not just this county, but Banner as well. So, yeah, I'm just looking forward to that. I live in Dalton, just by the way. So, I am already getting stuff in motion for making sure I can respond here properly to the citizens and, you know, for everybody. I don't want anybody to go without. So, I've already talked to a bunch of people, making sure that that's, everything's gonna be covered until I can respond or get things done virtually, so.
So, you'll be working full-time now?
Yes.
Yeah, correct, okay. Are you, are you here every day, or?
Yes, I will be traveling up here every day.
Really? Okay. I've heard a lot of good things about you.
Oh, good.
No, I really have, I really have. A lot of, a lot of folks are very pleased with what they've seen and what you've done and how you've helped Tim out so much. Believe it or not, some of it's come from Tim. Thank you for the work that you, that you've done, and we look forward to, to working with you until we, until we get a replacement.
Yeah.
So, you don't have to drive all the way up here every day. It would be good.
I'm glad to do it until we get the right person, so.
And just know that we're here for you if you need anything, or whatever needs to happen, and I, and I think they made a good choice, to be honest with you.
Well, I've had the privilege of working with Ashley for a couple of years now, and I've worked with Tim for, ever since he's been here. I'm the Assistant Cert Coordinator for the two counties. And in fact, I just attended a traffic incident management training course out at the airport last Saturday. Put on by Region 22 and Nebraska Department of Transportation, excellent training. I highly recommend any commissioners in the county, or any kind of officials for that matter. When you have your opportunity to go to those trainings, to go to those trainings, because you get to see our different agencies working together. And I can honestly say, Region 22, Tim in particular, has been very instrumental in getting these agencies together to work very efficiently. I've had the privilege of working with all the agencies. I've worked with the FBI, Sheriff's Department, all the law enforcement agencies, fire, rescue. I've worked with groups in Wyoming. And our Region 22 is outstanding, and I think with Ashley in leadership during the interim time, it'll continue to do so. And she does have a great support system of public safety in her area to, to come along her side, and we appreciate you, Ashley.
Thanks, guys.
Last meeting, I believe, we said a lot about Tim. We'll just reiterate what we're, what we said. Tim, thank you for your ten years of service, however long it's been.
Almost ten.
Almost ten. You've, you've done a wonderful job for this county, and we appreciate everything you've done. We wish you the best of luck, the absolute best of luck. I hope everything goes well for you.
Thank you.
Down there.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say?
I agree.
Okay, if not, have a... Sign up for Big Ten Football.
Oh, of course.
You can at least watch the game.
Appreciate it.
John, just for your information, he's not a real big Nebraska fan. I don't know, I don't know if he... What's that? Well, no, he's from somewhere down south. I don't know. Whatever it is. Wouldn't buy, wouldn't buy any red clothes or anything like that. He was... That's just him. I, I don't know what, what it is. We tried, we tried for ten years to make him a big red fan. We couldn't get the job done. I don't, I don't know what else to do. Alright, next item is discussed, consider approval of renewal of the contract for the medical services with Advanced Correctional Healthcare, Inc. Sheriff Overman.
Kind of ironic about all the costs that John Cannon was talking about in caps on things. This'll be a good argument for you, John. So, so, this is, this has to do with the jail and our healthcare at the jail. And so, we contract with a company called Advanced Correctional Healthcare. They are a nationwide company. They are all respected. There are a lot of jails in Nebraska and, and other places. And they have, they've done a very good job for us, and I attribute that to the staff that they've got here. That staff is all leaving. The reason the staff is all leaving is because this company made a decision a few months ago. They notified us of that, and we tried to get them to rethink it. And, but it just, it, it didn't, it didn't work. So, we had, the nurses that we had, there were three. We had two full-time and part-time nurses. Or one full-time and two part-time. So, we have twelve-hour-a-day nursing, nursing care. And, and, and that's every day except, with the exception of just a couple of holidays. We have a nurse there twelve hours a day. Also, we have a, a prescriber, somebody that can prescribe, which is a nurse practitioner. And they are on, on our site three hours a week. And plus, we have unlimited access to them twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So, and they answer the phone every time we need them, which is when the nurses, basically, when the nurses aren't there, or when the nurses are there and they need the advice of someone with higher qual, higher level of qualification. We call them and they answer. And that has, I can tell you that, in the realm of running jails, the most litigious part of that is, is inmate, is probably inmate healthcare. If you don't do it right, they are coming after you. And, and they will have experts, and they will have attorneys, and, you know, you've seen that happen. We, we have a pending lawsuit right now. On the federal side, a federal lawsuit that's been filed against us that's, that involves the death of a detainee. We've had other detainees that have passed away there while they were in our care. And nothing has come of any of that. I'm really, the, the lawsuit's been filed right now, very, I know all of the details of it, and I'm very, very comfortable that the county's gonna come out just fine there. Because I believe that our nurses did everything right. They did it right while it was happening. I was informed while it was happening, watched what was going on, and I think that we did everything right. But anyhow, with that said, this is a, this is about a twenty-four percent increase that they're proposing. And this is, we would've had an increase anyway, but what they say is, and, and this is in their contract language. It's eighty-four hours a week, RNs only, so no more LPNs. LPNs should not work alone according to most state licensing boards, although in Nebraska they can. And we've researched that. In fact, they sent us the documentation, said Nebraska they can, but they said, as a company, we're not gonna do this anymore. The replacement of L, furthermore, internal data, this is the company, the nationwide company, from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-two, shows that sites with an RN versus an LPN experience eighty-four percent fewer claims and ninety-five percent less in legal costs. So, for many reasons, ACH is transitioning to an RN workforce. So, this is, so, we also get with them nine hours a week of a qualified mental health professional. We could use a lot more than that, but that's, that's built in, and then we have an on-call mental health professional. Something called an annual pool. We want to definitely stay with that. It's a cost, it's a big cost savings for us. Medical claims repricing, officer training. And one, one key thing is that we, we generate a lot of, there's a lot of our funding that helps to, to reimburse Scotts Bluff County taxpayers for the cost of that jail. Comes from US Marshal Service, and this is a company that, that they like. They're, they accept this company. Now, I will tell you that there are, there are other companies that do this. In order to do that, we have to put out a request for proposals. And we, that's gonna take us a while to write it, and then, and we haven't put it out because this came up for renewal, and so we've renewed. So, my proposal is to renew it for a year. In the meantime, we've looked at some other things, and I, I will tell you that I looked at another, another jail in this, in our region that has, they have twenty-four-hour care, but they have, their, their average daily population, ours is two twenty-five. And, which means there's like four jails in Nebraska that are bigger than ours. But this, this, this other one that I looked at in our region has almost the same daily population we do. They're paying more than two million a dol, more than two million dollars a year for their healthcare. And so, our price is, you know, I, I mean, I don't like having to tell you it's going up twenty-four percent, but I can tell you, if we don't have this, if we don't have this, then every time, we are, we are taking a detainee to the hospital to get checked out. And so, you know, we're gonna, we're certainly looking for cost savings here. But I think everybody in Nebraska that has ACH is gonna be in the same boat. I mean, I've, I've, there are other places that have ACH, and we've, I mean, it is, I mean, you're, you're, the comparisons there are pretty good. They're pretty good, so.
And, and Mark, I didn't hear what you said when you were talking about the, uh, federal marshals. Did you say they, they do like the, this company?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The US, the US Marshals like this company.
Yeah.
This company, this company's been very good when we've, because when we've had these, when we've had these inmate deaths, okay, that, the death of an inmate in custody, anybody, that triggers an investigation, okay? We do the investigations. We call the State Patrol to help us because we run the jail now, and all of those investigations result in a grand jury, a grand jury investigation. A hundred percent of them. Anybody that dies in custody, it's a grand jury investigation. And, and so, the grand jury and the attorneys, they look at everything we did and how we did it. And when you look at what our medical people did, I have never, never once have I been disappointed, never once. But, it's quite, it speaks to the quality, one, it basically speaks to the quality of the nurses that we've had, who now have all departed or are going to all depart because none of them are RNs. And so, hopefully, we get, we get some good ones to replace them. And, oh, but I just, you know, we, it's just something, I wish I didn't have this news for you, but it's a decision the company made, and when you, and the company has explained to us, this is nationwide. They've made this change, and you can see why they did it. When you see eighty-four percent fewer claims, ninety-five percent less in legal costs. Because they've got, so, because we're getting sued over, right now, over a detainee that passed away. And, and they're getting sued too. So, NERMA is representing us, but our lawyer is now talking to ACH lawyer because we're, we're all tossed together. And of course, when their nurses are getting sued and their company is getting sued, NERMA's not representing their nurses, and NERMA's not representing their company. They have to pay for that.
Even, even though they were working for us at the time?
Yeah, but they're contractors.
Right.
So, they're not our employees.
Gotcha.
So, they work there, but I don't supervise them. They're not county employees.
And I can tell you, one reason we do get a lot of the marshal prisoners is because of the quality of our medical section.
That's exactly right.
I've dealt with them. I've, I've had that experience. And I tell you, and it's, it's because the quality of our officers, the quality of leadership, and the quality of our medical staff that we're getting these federal prisoners, and we're getting federal prisoners from five states. It's just unbelievable, and...
It is. I just talked to another, another sheriff in Nebraska, contacted me within the last couple of weeks and asked how our federal numbers were, because they have, they hold federal detainees too. They're in eastern Nebraska, so they're holding for Nebraska, and we don't hold, almost never, for Nebraska, because the federal courts are in Lincoln and Omaha. So, anybody's gotta go to court. They don't wanna do that. But we're holding for, of course, Wyoming, we have a contract with them, and North and South Dakota, and Colorado, occasionally Nebraska, and Montana's talking to us. So, the, the thing is that, those, those contracts, you don't get them from the other states unless Wyoming's happy with what you're doing, how you're doing. And so, they are. And the other states are happy with what we do, because, because they're talking to, th, those states talk, and, and Colorado came to us basically saying, please, please, please take some. And so, so our, our numbers have stayed constant, and our, and those numbers help us to fund, to fund this place. I mean, when you, when you look at it, and you'll see it in the budget, in the budget, that you'll see how much, how much money the federal prisoners bring in as opposed to what the percentage of that population is. And so, it's, it's pretty significant to help us, but, you know, the price of doing business there is, is going up.
And so, this would help us raise the rates to the feds?
Except, it would. It will help us raise the rates to the feds, except that federal contract that we signed it within the last year, and you have to sign a three-year contract. So, we can't, we can't come back for three years. And it was...
But we were still fairly substantial.
Yeah, we got a twenty-five percent boost. Last, last time, I know.
But this is... We could still pass it on to either other counties or...
We, we can, we can raise our rates to other counties.
Yeah.
Yes, we can.
And so, are you proposing this renewal number one, or number two?
I'm, I'm proposing renewal number one, because that, when, when you say the RNs only, you don't wanna remove the pool. The pool is beneficial to us.
Right, and explain that to me?
Well, it's kinda hard to explain. It ha, I mean, it has to do with, it has to do with pricing, it has to do, and it also has to do with medications. Okay, so, this, this contract, they, they provide medications too.
I see.
Okay. It would, although it costs more, it's about thirty-seven thousand dollars. It looks like it's about thirty-nine thousand dollars more. It's, it's beneficial to us. We've, we've explored that before.
And so, my understanding is, is when a prisoner comes into our jail, we're responsible for their healthcare? Pretty much.
Well, well, yeah, pretty, pretty much, we are, if it's a local prisoner. Now, if it's, and so, we take care of the basic needs, and if they are, if they're, if they're a prisoner, if they're a federal prisoner, and they need something that our nurses can't provide, and they go to the hospital, the feds pay for that.
Right.
If they are a prisoner from another county, and they need to go to the hospital,
That county.
and they don't have their own insurance, that county pays for it. We're, we don't pay for it. If it's our prisoner, and they don't have insurance, sometimes we get stuck paying for it.
Right. And that, and that even, if I understand it correctly, even if they're on Medicare, then doesn't that stop, and we're responsible, is what I understand?
Medicaid stops, but a lot just, is, is chan, there, there's a lot of discussion about changing that law.
Well, and that's why John's here, and so,
Right.
I just was thinking that it's a good time to mention that to John, that,
Yeah.
you know, we should not be responsible for healthcare of inmates.
Right.
Period.
The Medicaid, the whole Medicaid thing, federal law.
Yeah.
So, the state can't, couldn't, state couldn't change if they wanted to. We, we explored that. But there are some things that are changing in that law coming this year.
Okay.
That, that will be helpful for us.
Because that simply isn't right.
Yeah.
That isn't right for the
Well...
citizens of our county to have to pay for health insurance for inmates.
The other thing, I'll tell you, when, when it comes to those, to us getting billed for that, we are probably, you know, Lisa Ryan here, which is, would be every hospital's kinda worst nightmare because she knows, because she works there, so she knows that law inside and out. And we've had, we have had multiple meetings with the hospital. She's been to one, and I've been to three, where the topic is us paying for inmate healthcare. And so, we go there and we show them, she and I both have handed them, here's the law, and here's how it applies. So, they've sent us a number of bills that we are not responsible for. If you didn't have Lisa Ryan looking at it, and you had someone else without her qualifications, we might've paid them. But she says, we're, there's some that we can't avoid, but there's a lot that we can't.
Or at least we reduce it.
And, and plus, we get, plus, we get it reduced, and so, we, what we do get is when we get a bill from them, those bills start off like this, and she says, no, we pay the Medicaid rate, and that's in statute. And so, she knows how, she knows how to do that, and so, a bill that starts off like this, ends up like this. We still have to, we still have to pay it. But all of this helps reduce our exposure to, to really big medical bills. And it's a lot of money. I know it's a lot of money, but, but I, I just don't see a way around it.
So, I'll, I'll just ask, because I asked about the insurance also. Is there another company to bid against this company, or?
Oh, oh, there's multiple other companies that will bid. When we, when we put out a request for proposals, yeah, we will. There are multiple other companies that will bid. Yes, yeah, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of healthcare providers for jails out there. And there's, these guys, although they are, although ACH is within Nebraska, and they're in some really good-sized jails that we know about, and, and those jail administrators are pretty happy with the service they're getting from them. They're not the exclusive ones in Nebraska. There are other providers in Nebraska too. I don't know how the, how the rates compare, but I, I suspect when, when you have to, when you have to hire RNs, and you have to hire physicians, and you have to have insurance and pay for attorneys if you get sued, and you have to have doctors on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and they have to be there all the time. It's just, it's, this is, it's an expensive proposition.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, if not, I would entertain a motion to either approve or disapprove, renewal of the Advanced Correctional Healthcare, Inc.
I move that we renew, renewal one for Advanced Correctional Healthcare.
I'll second. Put a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Record your votes.
Sheriff, is this for Kim to sign or you?
Uh, Kim.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Alright, next item is discussed, consider dismissing VOCA.
I think it's a HIDA?
Oh, the HIDA, I'm sorry. I, I moved.
HIDA's there.
Where is it? Right here. Yeah, you're correct. Discuss, consider the approval, signature of HIDA grant. I checked it before I got to it.
Okay. This is much better news.
What's that?
This is much better news.
Yeah.
This is, this is, this is, I've talked to you every year about this. HIDA stands for High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, and we all live in a high-intensity drug trafficking area. Scotts Bluff County has been identified. And so, it was, it was a high-intensity drug trafficking area, and there's a number of them within Nebraska, and there's, there's a number of them within every state. So, one of the advantages is that we get a federal grant, and there's no matching funds, there's no cost to Scotts Bluff County. And so, they're giving us a grant. This is the twenty-four grant. We've started getting them in about ninety-seven. They haven't gone up a lot, but this is, this helps support the WING Task Force, and specifically in Scotts Bluff County, because that's the high-intensity drug trafficking area that's within the WING area of operations. WING can, WING is eleven counties in the panhandle, and the only HIDA county is this one. It actually benefits all of the ten or so WING investigators from around the panhandle, because there's, there's, there are some training things that get paid for that benefits everybody. So, this is, this is a, a routine thing. There's no cost to the county, no match, anything. And there's really nothing different about this, except this is the twenty-four grant, which typically comes out about this time of year.
How much is it?
About sixty-four thousand dollars.
Sixty-four.
Around there.
And unfortunately, it just touches the tip of the iceberg.
Well, it do, it does, but, you know, this thing is really valuable to us because this provides us with some funding for things that do not come from anyone else's budget. And so, there's some technical equipment, there's some training, there's some, there's some funding in there. They fund, we have an intelligence analyst, a part-time intelligence analyst, that is a Scotts Bluff County employee that is fully funded, including all fringe benefits, by this grant. So, and that benefits everybody in the task force.
All eleven bands, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. Entertain a motion for either approval or denial, or the signature on the HIDA grant, please.
Move approval of the HIDA grant proposal and approve the chairman to sign the agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Record your votes, please. Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Now, we'll discuss and consider dismissing the VOCA grant loan. Lisa?
Heather provides you a list of the loan repayment schedule. I think she sends it to you monthly in your packets. This is part of, kind of in advance to the next topic, is we do, when a fund falls short at the end of the month, Heather can't leave it at a negative. Can't be in the red. She has to borrow from another fund. And we either borrow from the Keno Fund or the Inheritance Fund. And right now, we have a couple loans out of the Keno Fund, and one that has been standing, outstanding for some time, but we don't see that we're gonna get reimbursed. In budget year twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a victim-witness coordinator on staff that applied for the VOCA grant. She no longer works for us, and not all of the expenses got recouped from the Crime Commission, because they were also going through a reformation. During this time, they have new leadership there, and we, we just kinda hit, hit a lot of dead ends. I have Tammy Frye in the off, um, audience too, and she works with grants and had a, she and an office staff member of hers helped clean up the VOCA grant as much as we could after this person departed. We're still left with twenty-four thousand five hundred that's been borrowed from the Keno Fund that we'd like to be excused, or...
What's the right?
Yeah, excuse, forgiven. There you go, because we don't see how we're going to recoup the funds at this point. The crime, as Sheriff just showed you with the HIDA grant, it's an annual renewal process. The crime, as Sheriff just showed you with the Hyda grant, it's an annual renewal process. And we no longer have the voca grant and I don't think we're going to have it anytime soon again. So, questions for us?
When you say that there is, does it appear that there's any way to re- replenish that? We've looked at everything that we can and there's just.
There's nowhere else.
Nowhere, nowhere to go get it.
No, you'd have to have the Crime Commission decide that they would come back and pay us. Except for some of the funds that they didn't pay before and they might not agree with some of the funds that were submitted on behalf of Scott- Scotts Bluff County. And I suspect that's part of the problem.
Okay.
The grant manager, the person from our side that was, is no longer on staff. We can't argue that case.
So how should we help um not let that happen in the future, I guess?
How do we know?
I mean, unless it's a grant funded program, I wouldn't see it happening again in the future. Um you know, this happened to be a new grant that never ever made money.
I don't think, it wasn't meant to make and it's kind of like.
Or I know, but it never, it never, like even it was in the negative.
From the get-go.
From the get-go.
Yeah, it seems like we had several discussions with that person.
Yes, you did.
So, but same story of how do we?
Good memory. How do we prevent it in the future? I mean, we could fall into it with the Hyda grant or with the wing grant. If the grantor decided to no longer pledge the funds, I guess, how do we prevent that from happening? You're, you're signing all the paperwork. I think you're pretty well assured that they're granting money that they have. And that they're, they have a good program, that the department is running well, like the Crime Commission.
Well.
I would s- how, how do we assure it? Well, we just don't get into the situation again.
You're right, don't spend the money before we get it.
And Hyda get says, we grant you ninety thousand dollars, whatever that dollar amount is. I don't think this voca grant ever did that. Tammy, how does your juvenile aid, do you, are you granted a certain dollar amount?
Yeah, so she knows upfront, but I don't remember voca being that way. That it was, you know how much money you can replenish.
Right.
Was voca that way? Do you recall? It was with the way the grant was set up. However, the person didn't do her job. That's, I mean, that's just the bottom line.
Our person.
Right. Like my new grant this year is a hundred and twenty-six thousand. I constantly keep tabs on where that money goes. If we need to make any adjustments through the year, I have to do a project change. Um I immediately turn in monthly bills to the county or claims to the county. And then turn around and take that same claim and ask for the grant to cover that. And they're very specific in what I can and can't ask for, but you know all of that upfront. And I know with this person, after she left, um I went through her office, I went through all of her paperwork. And she didn't have a paper trail. She didn't have the necessary documentation that the Crime Commission is looking for. Because my grant is also Crime Commission based. She just didn't have the documentation needed.
So, so you don't get a sum of money to draw from. You, you go to it every time you need to have something. And the problem we had, we spent money and then it wasn't approved or didn't, didn't get reimbursed. Is that, is that where we're at with this one?
Well, like we accepted a hundred and twenty-six thousand for the juvenile aid grant this year. The money's there and it's broke down into different categories. She didn't have the documentation to give to the Crime Commission in order for them to reimburse the county.
I see.
For them to release the money.
And that just, it just got progressively worse. It, it just built up to the point that now we're, what, what was the amount, twenty thousand?
Um the original amount was forty-one thousand and in November, we were actually able to pay back sixteen thousand five hundred dollars of that. Because I think, I know Lisa worked on it and I don't know, Tammy, did you work on trying to go back in and, and get those funds? So I think we've gotten, we've gotten paid back for some of it because the beginning of the fiscal year, we were forty-one thousand dollars in the negative with this fund. And we did get it down a little bit, but I just don't think that there's any more to get at this point um for that existing grant. And it's not one that we've applied for again to recharge.
So, Lisi, you had mentioned about going to the Crime Commission to ask whether they would reimburse any of that. That hasn't been done or we know that they're not going to do it. Is that correct?
It's not my grant, so I haven't been to the Crime Commission. It's something I could ask. Um there's been a turnover into or three people since that grant came about. But I could go in and ask the Crime Commission and see what I can find out.
Turnover down there?
Hmm, oh, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I remember that they were having problems.
I also know that because of this, the voca grant is suspended for at least three years. Which we don't need the grant, I mean.
Could we, i- is this something that needs to be done tonight? Can we table it to the next meeting and maybe make a call and see if there's anything or where are we at with it?
The only problem we have is we're asking, we're asking this at the end of the fiscal year. You know, by the time you guys have their next meeting, it'll be July.
I see, okay.
So we would have to carry it forward. That's why we're asking.
Just to, just to forgive it and move, move, move forward, okay.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just thinking, so how much hassle is it to carry it over to the next year? If we have a chance to get twenty-four thousand dollars.
It is something that, that they do look at when we get audited.
Right.
We'll try one more time and bring it back.
But that's, like I said, that's completely up to you guys.
Our auditor looks at that.
Yes.
Is there, this lady that did this, I, I remember the young lady that was here. Did she uh, did she have a supervisor or was she doing this on her own or how was this working?
She was doing it on her own.
Okay.
Um she told everyone she had grant experience and federal grant experience. Um. I don't know that she did.
I'm curious.
She was.
But somebody should have over seen her.
She was under, which department is she in and uh?
She operated under the county attorney.
County Attorney's Department.
Okay. So really nobody was there to look in and see, you know, verify her work.
And she did, and, and not that to her fault. The con- the Crime Commission did hang her up pretty, pretty badly. It did downstairs with Hyda too. Mine, I'm thinking of Hyda's Crime Commission, right? Yeah, yeah, I guess, so.
And if you wanna let it carry forward so that we, I would just like to get it cleaned up in the near future, just so that we know. I mean, if we can find out that there's more money available and that we can get some or all of it paid back. You know, we would love to see that happen, but it just seems like we've hit a brick wall on this for well over a year now. Because this was a loan that was carried forward from last year. So it was actually.
I, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna hurt to carry it over to the next meeting if nothing else.
Right.
We'll get you something in writing.
Next meeting, next year, and I don't see a problem with that either.
That we would be exhausted. I agree. Ev- everything to try to get the money back.
It's, it's not completely fine. It's just something that needs to be looked at so that we don't have it just hanging out there.
Okay. Sure, no, I, and, and by next, by next meeting, if we've, if we've looked at every way, there's no way to do it, then I don't have a problem doing what we need to do for it.
Something in writing from the Crime Commission. We'll work on that.
Okay, all right. So I, I would, I would entertain a motion that we, that we table this consider, this consideration until next meeting. I'll, I'll make a motion. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
Well, so I'm, I guess I'm okay with that. It, we can table it again if we need to, but I'm a little concerned they're not gonna have an answer by the time we have the next meeting, but that's all right. We'll table it again if we need to.
We won't know till the next meeting, I guess. Put it in old business and we can leave it there for a little bit if we had to. Okay, all right. Any other questions, concerns? Record your vote, please. Okay, thank you, ladies. Appreciate it.
So, so I wanna be sure. Lisa's gonna work on that along with Tammy?
Tammy also, yeah.
Okay. So if we could do that, that'd be great. So.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, Nagle could help out, maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, all right, thanks.
Crime Commission was actually supposed to be here today and I was gonna be with them today and scheduling conflict came up, so I didn't.
So all is not lost yet. We, okay, very good, thank you. Okay, let's move it on to discuss consider approval of resolution for loan of Keno lottery funds. Lisa?
This is a resolution we bring forth every year as I just discussed. At the end of the month, Heather's office reconciles all the different funds we have and no fund can be in the negative. And if it is, we borrow from either the Keno Fund, which we have a resolution to present before you to borrow up to three hundred thousand dollars from the Keno Fund. I guess that's the first point. And we would like to have you approve this so we can continue that into next year.
For whatever funds need to be funded, right.
And it has to come to us to do it.
You do get a report of it.
Right.
You get a report of it every month.
Then you get a spreadsheet. I email you guys how it's structured, everyone.
Right, this one.
Yeah, the one you said that you would, did not want to look at.
All right. What's the board's pleasure?
And we're actually in a lot better shape than we were.
I see that. Down to just three on that and um.
Yes, and the relief aid's gonna be taken care of. That's long.
And so the three hundred thousand, is that what it's been?
Yes.
And we get notified?
Yes.
I'd move approval of the resolution.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? Record your votes. Okay, moving on to the next item.
Hang on.
Sorry.
Okay.
I can go now?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That was a short one. All right, discuss consider approval of resolution of loan inheritance tax funds.
Same discussion, but borrowing from the inheritance fund to the tune of five hundred thousand dollars if, if it's available in the inheritance fund.
Okay.
And money could go to any fund, anywhere. And the same thing with the other one, any fund, anywhere. But it's just where it's coming from.
Yeah, it's where we take it out of and then when we have the funds within their department fund to pay it back, then we move the money back.
And this is the same amount as last time, five hundred thousand. And we get notified.
Via the spreadsheet, yes.
Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to allow inherited tax funds. Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Record your votes. Okay.
Ross?
I hear her, I'll hit her again. All right. Next item, discuss and consider payroll schedule options, uh monthly, bi-monthly or bi-weekly. That's our discussion. Lisa, one que- how many employees do, uh do we have?
Two hundred and fifty.
Two fifty, okay. Okay, there was a uh, a poll taken by Mr. White. I carry sent, I think everybody got a copy of that. Uh two hundred and thirty responses out of that, which isn't bad. Either that or they're not getting paid. I don't, I'm not the reason why they wouldn't respond. But uh anyway, we have hundred and thirty-two that want to keep it a monthly and ninety-eight. Ninety-eight, that would go to bi-weekly. Is that what I'm reading right?
Correct.
Go ahead, Tam. It's all yours, buddy.
This poll is the best. I put out two polls since I've been the personnel board representative for the employees. And uh this is the best response that I've seen. I didn't think we'd get this many. So I'm really happy that the employees chose to do that and it shows you kind of where they wanna be. I thought this poll was important to see what the employees really felt. Cause right now we should really be looking at the employees we have, not future employees at this point. You know, and I'll give you the reference that I saw this morning. You know, there are companies giving signing bonuses for new people. What about the staff that they already have? They're not taking care of them. We need to make sure we're doing, taking care of our, our staff that's already here also. And that was part of this poll, just to figure out where people were at. There's been a lot of discussion on it. Some rumblings about it, you know.
Yeah.
Month's employees, so.
And, and nobody's gonna get any less money. We're just gonna either, either keep it every thirty days or get it twice a month or what, whatever amounts to. You're still gonna have, at the end of the month, you're still gonna have the same amount of money.
Correct. And I think a lot of the employees that are here, so used to being paid monthly, pay out your bills within the first week and you know what you have left to live on or what your extras are, you know.
I think that came up at the personnel, at the uh department head meeting three weeks ago or whatever.
I think that's right.
That, that, there are those that have their budgets set up and they're ready to, they don't, they don't wanna change that. I.
Well, and I understand the concern about new employees coming on after to wait, you know, four weeks or longer.
Yeah, and that is, that is a concern.
It is a concern, but I think that we have, we should have the ability where we can make that, you know, make that change for somebody. Maybe pay them after they work two weeks, they get paid the third and then they go on to the monthly routine or something like that. We should have the ability somewhere to do that or find a way to do it.
Just, just to tweak what we're already doing.
Correct.
To take care of, cause I'm, I think Russ and I, or Russ has talked about it too. Where you gets a lot of the, the lower paid folks that are coming in and, and uh there're not a lot of reserve. When they get here, then sometimes they're waiting five weeks to, you know, before they get a paycheck.
Well, I remember. It's, it was, it was a tough first month, but I, like I said, I think that we should have the abilities to be able to help these new employees coming on where they get. You know, they work two weeks and get paid the third or whatever. You know, you don't want paying before they work, obviously.
How, how, how tough is that to do, Lisa?
Ask Kelly.
I wanna, I wanna know why, why can't after they've put in so many hours, we know what their salary is. If it's legal to do a claim, like a payroll advance and then hold it out of their check? Cause then it'll, we'll take the advance back out and then withhold all of their taxes from that. And that's been my idea for years, but.
For new people, not everybody, right?
Um, yes, to, the problem is the new people that need to adjust.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I don't know if it's legal. John?
I don't think so, I doubt. That's just my two cents, you know. I know, I, I can see the argument on both sides, but.
Well, I appreciate what you did. It, it gives us some, some idea of where we're, cause I would, I wouldn't have thought it would be.
I wouldn't either.
The numbers that are here.
Oh, it was fun watching the poll, cause when you send out that poll, I know none of you got that up there. But that poll gives everybody that that poll is sent to, it updates the number every time somebody else. So if Charlie puts one in and then he looks ten minutes later and then Mark, Ken and, and Mike put one in, he'll see that. When he clicks on his thing and automatically gives it to everybody that's taking the poll.
I don't believe that this came from the commissioners. It started from other department heads and other employees that was saying it's too long.
That's right.
Jump or uh?
Uh, you know, I got that out of a road and bridge meeting.
The road and bridge, um there was, it came to us from others.
Right.
Now, um you said something about shouldn't matter about future employees. We only need to listen to the existing employees and I don't think that's right either. There's, if, if we see a significant benefit in um hiring people by paying every two weeks, then we need to look at that.
What the benefit is on that, Mark? And I, Steve has told me numerous times, he's had, had young people come in and apply for the job. Basically, he gets all through everything and then he, they ask when do they get paid and he'll say, it could be six weeks. They don't stick around. They, they're on the way out the door.
Is that, is that true?
Yeah, yeah, it is in some cases.
Not all, but.
You know, some of them can handle that six weeks of preparing for it. I remember a couple years ago, it was probably the worst for us, because we were in a retirement fund and keep getting new employees hitting the payroll once a month. So it was, it was not easy.
I, I could see a difference if we were, if we were moving from bi-weekly to monthly. I, I think your numbers would be considerably different.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Because I, I, and I'm speaking just for myself. You know, I, I worked for, in my old life, I got paid every two weeks and that was nice. I don't know what I would have done if they would have changed it to, to monthly. I, I'm not sure. I would, I, yeah, I, I would have had to adjust and do some different things or whatever the case might be. But in this, in this case, in this case, you're gonna get a check every two weeks. So even if you were paid monthly before, you're getting half of that within two weeks and the other half in the other two weeks.
Right, yeah.
So, and I don't.
And I don't disagree with what Mark said either, you know. I believe, you know, both ways have benefits. I just wanna urge you guys to remember, you know, we have current employees that have been on that. I mean, some people have been working here for over forty years that have been there.
But what's the benefit of it? What benefit is it that to get paid monthly? There's some benefit. There's some benefit here, the person may do in the payroll.
Yep.
But besides that, explain the benefit to me.
The only benefit that I can say is that the people that are used to it, they get paid once a month, all their bills go out, and they...
Right.
It's easier, it's easier to budget with one month, but I can also see it on every two weeks, so it doesn't...
And it, all it takes is a phone call to whoever that bill's going to.
Yep.
You take that money, and you set it aside for two more weeks, and then you can deposit all of it if you want to, and you call it a one-month pay period.
And we, and we're taking care of two problems.
It's not that tough.
I just wanna make sure we got this poll out to hear what the employees really want, so you guys can see kinda...
We appreciate, we appreciate you doing that.
I am surprised by it, I appreciate it.
I am too, I'm amazed.
Yeah.
Oh, I watched that poll pretty hard for the first couple days, because it was so crazy to watch the numbers.
Yeah.
We're not taking anything away from anybody, I, I think that's what we have to keep in mind. You're gonna get paid more often.
Yep.
You're gonna get paid the same amount of money, and, and if you have a, a payment that is scheduled for towards the end of the month, again, one phone call, and you can probably get it moved to somewhere else. So you're not really going to, I don't think anyway, I'm not a, I'm not the bank, or, or the, the Mastercard company, or whatever the case might be.
Right.
And Tim brought to, to my attention that this is in the personnel policy, so should it not be something Personnel Board discusses and presents to you if they want to change?
I, I...
Well, that would be more appropriate.
Or, well, the commissioners can sense, you can send something to the Personnel Board to be reviewed by us to be...
I think that's just what she's suggesting.
Yeah, and then it will come back to you, yeah.
I, and I have no problem doing that, I really don't, that's, so...
The only, the only thing what, what Steve and I talked about, it just gives us a little better chance at, at bringing people in, rather than they go on down the road to a contractor, somebody, I'm talking about the guys for blades and dump trucks.
I could, I could see a lower, I don't...
Somebody that's broke, he, he needing a job, he needing that check.
He's coming here for a job, he probably doesn't have a, a diamond mine anywhere.
Yeah, that's it.
My nephew at Simons, he gets paid weekly, so...
I bet, yeah, we, we pay weekly now, we've had, we had to switch over to weekly here in the last two or three months.
Per their requests, or really?
Yeah, the, the man wanted it weekly, and you guys want, want it, I can't, I can't get one on it.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm not, personally not affected by it, but I, it appears that there are a hundred and thirty-two that are affected by it.
You could leave the commissioners monthly, and whoever wants to stay, but I think...
I'm, I guess I'm only gonna say this and that, is if it's in the Personnel Policy Manual, then what are we talking about it for? Let them deal with it. They're the only ones that can bring it up to us.
Yeah.
Because we voted to keep the Personnel Policy Manual.
Because it was requested to put on this agenda, that's why we're talking about it. And I, I'm...
Well, it's only, it's only been talked about because it's really been coming from us.
Yeah, and, and I think going...
And I'm saying, forget it, and if they wanna, if they wanna change something, let it go through the Personnel Policy Committee.
That's kinda where it needs to go anyway.
It's gonna have to go there anyway.
That's exactly right.
Regardless how, what we feel about it.
So we have a, we have a commissioner representative on the Personnel Board. So I would, I guess I would ask for a vote among this board to give direction to Mark Harris to bring this to the Personnel Board. That's what this is about, that's why it's on the agenda.
I'm okay bringing it.
Yeah, that's fine. You're okay what, Mark?
I'm okay presenting it to them.
Yeah, I, I'd still like to see it, I, I still think we'd have a better chance at hiring some good people, getting started. And that's what, what we're needing here. And I don't dis, you know, I'm not gonna discount what Kelly said, if there's a way we could do what Kelly said works, fine for me too, as long as we can make an exception, and do legally, I'm good with that.
And I wanna know what the benefit is to my office only doing it once. What is your reasoning behind that comment?
You mean earlier?
You just said the benefit to my office, what's the benefit?
Less paperwork.
Well, that you only have to do payroll once a month, rather than twice.
Okay.
That's the only benefit.
Okay.
Make it, make it more work for, for your, your payroll department, basically. Okay, I, I would entertain a motion then, that we, uh, we submit this to the Personnel Board for review, and then come back here with a recommendation from the Personnel Board. I'll, I'll make a motion. So we have a motion, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion?
So, so basically, we're just asking the Personnel Board to discuss the topic. We're not, we're not asking the Personnel to take into consideration a specific action.
I think we should, I think we should ask them, I think we should, one way or another.
I'll present a specific, what, what we're...
That'll be coming from Mark.
And we'll discuss the policy.
But you need to be sure it's on the agenda, Miss Lisa, okay?
Okay, all right, any other discussion? Record your votes. Thank you, Tim, for your work on that, appreciate it. I know you had as much fun with it as everybody else. Okay, next item. Discuss and consider extending moratorium on conditional use permit related to renewable energy topics for an additional six months, Charlie?
Yeah, so, uh, you know, we put a moratorium in place six months ago. I wanna extend that moratorium because we haven't had any, any opportunities to, uh, work on our comprehensive plan or zoning regulations, uh, because we've spent so much time on this other, the, the permit that was, that was pending. So, I do wanna read an email I got from Billy Maven at about three o'clock this afternoon. Um... It says, "Just thought I'd give you an update if you want to share this with the others. The Planning Commission has a Subcommittee for Zoning Regulations Amendments. We are in the middle of compiling different energy regulations from other counties and municipalities, and looking at a classification system for different sizes of renewable energy facilities. I hope that we can have something sent to the County Board in the next six months." So I'd, um, I don't, I don't know if that's the direction the Board wants to go. Um, you know, we had discussed before that we needed to hire a consultant, or a lawyer, or, um, somebody who's, um, versed in these things, um, because the Planning Commission told us they weren't versed in these things, so I'm not sure how they're gonna compile this, um. But, you know, I guess if they have a Subcommittee working on it, they could, they might be able to hammer through some things, but, uh, there was a, there was a topic here. A lot of the discussion last week was, um, about getting some outside help on this, and if, uh... So I, I guess, for now, the action item on the agenda is, is to extend the moratorium for an additional six months. And if I believe correctly, the previous one doesn't expire until July sixth. So this one, this one wouldn't pick up until, wouldn't start until July sixth. So we'd be six months after that before we are, um, able to receive permits or, or hand out permits for these projects.
Charlie, what's Keith Marvin done? Has he brought us anything at all, after we talked to him?
You know, I was going back through some previous meeting minutes here, and I got to the point where... Kelly, I guess you'd have to remind me where we, I guess I wasn't going through minutes, I was going through agendas. Um, and on January second, there was a agenda item that said, "Discuss and consider development of RFP for consultation firms to assist Scottsbluff County Commissioners and Scottsbluff County Planning and Zoning Commission with updating Scottsbluff County's comprehensive plan, which provides guidance and regulations to renewable energy." If I remember correctly from that meeting, we didn't take action on it. I believe, I believe that was tabled, or that was, um, kinda passed over because we... But I, I'm not for certain, because if we took action on it, we certainly never put out an RFP.
I thought we were gonna spend five thousand dollars, wasn't that, wasn't that the number we were, wasn't that what?
So that was for the supplemental review of the permit that was already on file.
That was, that was only for that permit?
Yes, that was only for that permit, that was, that was called a, that was a supplemental review. That would've been a different agenda item on a different meeting.
And how much, how much did we get back for the, our five thousand dollars from this individual?
Um, we had a long re, written report.
Yeah, it was a huge report, read it many times, I don't know who else read it.
I don't think I've ever got a copy of it.
Everyone got a copy.
We did?
Everyone got a copy.
At least a digital one, at least.
Just not printed, not printed.
Oh, gee.
There you go.
I'm used to paperwork.
Yep.
Well, I had a conversation with a commissioner of a, of a, another board, uh, back east, who's, they're about to hire this company to assist them in the renewable energy, uh, codes that they want to adopt, or whatever they wanna do. Uh, he didn't know a whole lot about them, they gave me, I talked to him, I think it was Saturday, we visited for a while. Uh, they're having similar issues to what we had out here. A lot of folks were misinformed, very misinformed about what was going to happen, he was trying to keep things in line, and they thought this Marvin might be able to help them with that. In fact, I think it's on their agenda tonight, whether they're going to hire him or whether or not. I, I don't know that we've got anybody beating our door down to, to put up another farm, uh... More, the moratorium, I think we've got a very capable, very capable building zoning director, has been doing it for quite a while. He's got a Subcommittee put together. And if he's, he's out looking for other items that were not brought up with our last permit, whatever they may be, uh... And I, far as I'm, I'm, far as I'm, so let him, let him do his job.
Well, he's asking for six months moratorium, he's asking for another six months.
He is, or?
He did, he asked for it.
Bill, Bill did?
Billy Maven, he's, uh, he didn't, he didn't ask for it.
He didn't ask for the moratorium, but he said he wants six months.
He said he would have it within six months, or at six months.
And so, why would we wanna let anybody come in and, and put in it for a permit, uh, until that paperwork's done, until those rules are in place?
What other, yeah, nevermind, we'll, we'll just go, we'll just go down a different road here.
Okay.
A different path, or maybe the same path, I guess. Okay. So Charlie, what you're asking is that we, uh, we have a motion to extend that moratorium, is that correct, basically, bottom line?
That would be, that's what the agenda item suggests, is that there would be a...
Do you have a, do you have a motion to that effect?
I have a motion, I'll make a motion.
The motion is to extend for?
Extend for six months.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So a motion and a second, is there any other discussion?
So, uh...
Okay, now, record your votes. I'm just telling you, whatever. Okay. Uh, next item is to discuss, consider hiring Zell HR to rekey for public defender position, Charlie?
Lisa, do you know how many applications we've received?
We've received one.
So the state statute says that we have to appoint a full-time public defender, or for any off, any elected office that's vacated, we have forty-five days to appoint that person. Unless there's an undue burden on the county, um, then, then, you know, we can show good cause, then, then we can extend that, uh, forty-five day window. I would say, uh, applicant of one does not meet the threshold for a, uh, a, a pool of applicants, I don't, I talked to several people who've been in HR and, and run, run large organizations, and typically, when you only get one applicant, you close, you close the job posting, and you, you repost the job posting at another time, you know, whether it be six months down the road, six weeks down the road. Um, so, here we are, we don't have any applicants, um, we could be much further down the road with this if, if, if we hired Zell, or any other headhunter, um, when I suggested it weeks ago. Um, but here we are, still with only one applicant, so, um, we, we owe the taxpayer a, 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 a pool of applicants to choose from, we can't, we can't work off of an applicant pool of them. So, that's the reason for my, for my, um, for putting this on the agenda. Um, it was also suggested to me that, um, we bundle this with, um, asking them, asking Zell to, um, hire for some additional staff attorneys, um, so may, maybe we can...
Charlie, we already have them hired to find us attorneys, and they don't. We put out sixteen thousand five hundred forty-two dollars for them to find us an attorney, we've got one, and we put another retainer in August of twenty twenty-three. They aren't just running to Scottsbluff for our jobs. They have, they do seek out the graduates from, help me, West, no, not Westland, Nebraska, from Creighton, from, we've got app, um, job, job requests at Wyoming, at Creighton, we've had them at all the law colleges. The students are going to take the bar right now.
Okay, so not so...
You wanna sink some more money into it, or do you wanna go with, we have, would, I would like you to hear, talk to the representatives for the public defender and get some of their input.
Okay, so we don't need to bundle the other staff positions, we could just hire for a public defender, that's a much different position than staff attorney. It, the pay is much greater than staff attorney, so I believe Zell would be able to headhunt for this position more effectively. And I think I have some people that agree with me.
Well, you might say, okay, and Platte County's looking for a public defender, so is Adams County, I see Serfie was recently looking. We aren't the only county out there looking for somebody.
So, Lisa, you'd indicate that they are, they're looking for staff attorneys for us also?
We already, we've had them looking for a, an attorney for over, for almost a year, well, I guess nine months. And we've had a few names come in, I think Dave's maybe gonna extend an offer to a person who's going to take the bar in July.
But that's, but that's a staff position, or not?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I do believe Kimball's gonna be looking for a county attorney too. That, that got released in the news today, but I mean, public defender, yes, is a different one.
Okay.
So is, is there another, maybe we need to find a different headhunter, if we don't think this job's, if this company's doing the job for us?
I think you put it on ballot in two years, you got a person in the role that can ro, run it.
From what I understand, the people that I've visited with, and not a lot, things are going well, I assume. I haven't heard, there's some of the staff right here, uh, things are, things are going well, things are getting done.
Yes, we, we started to publish the office a bit, as I was asked to do, but we're doing jail hours now, so we spend, each of us spend two hours a week at the jail specifically, uh, so we're having better communication with clients. Uh, we've been looking at how long it takes to process cases. Typically misdemeanors are running about forty-eight days, felonies are running about a hundred and thirty-three. I think we'd get misdemeanors under thirty days, I think we'd get felonies under a hundred, we might go a little lower on felonies. Uh, we also are still one attorney short, because I stepped up my position as a staff attorney open. Uh, because we were just talking about what they possibly take to do in one C cases, uh, which would be savings to the county of not having to pay for private work to do that. One C case is a bit more within the ballpark of what we do. Uh, we're on the agenda for July first to actually present to all of you what we do, how we do it, what our numbers look like, um, so you have a better understanding of the system. Because I think if you understand the... Cause I think if you understand the system better, you can understand then where the glitches in the system are. The other thing we're trying to do is, I send email to the county attorney and Ms. Chief Deputy both, asking them to get us police reports in a more timely fashion, uh, cause that would save us man hours, it would save man hours for both these agencies, the sheriff's office, uh, and other places. What happens now is we bring all these people to the courthouse for preliminary hearing and our client, we talk to the client and we ask the client, you know, there's a point in this, we should just waive it. And so we waive it at that point. And everybody has stood there for half an hour waiting. So you're gonna have two police officers, the county attorney, a judge, court recorder, the public defender and the, and the client. Part of the reason we're doing the jail hours is so we can get those clients to waive quicker on those cases that it makes sense to waive one. But we can only do that if we see the police report, so we know generally why our client is charged and how strong evidence is to whether or not we need to look at a case at a preliminary hearing. If we can waive those in writing, we actually speed that process up by almost two weeks. Because instead of having to wait for the preliminary hearing and then wait for the arraignment, we can jump in straight to the next arraignment. So there's, there are, there are built-in delays, but there are delays that we can control in moving the case faster, which is better both for the county, but also for the individual who's under charges. So we're, we're actually slaying two dragons, if you will. Um, we, what we need is an agreement with county attorney's office to give us a police report as soon as we're appointed. Uh, they will always make one more appearance than we will make, because they make that initial appearance. That's when the judge appoints us to come in and do stuff. And so when that happens, if we can get that police report right in, a lot of times because of the jail hours we're now doing, we can get the client to waive preliminary hearing quicker. We save all the agencies time and effort and we move the case faster through the process. That's what I put in since I've been here.
So, I guess right now I'd like to ask for an executive session with the Board and the, the, the staff people from the, the Public Defender's Office. Just some questions I'd, I'd be more comfortable asking in executive session. So that'd be my motion.
I'll second it. A motion, a second to move into executive session? Who do you want in the executive session?
The Board and the Public Defender's Office, who is, who are present.
I'd be Jessica Meyer, Justin Gilbert, myself.
Okay.
It'll be quick.
A motion and a second? Uh, are we able to vote on that? Do you want us to do it by voice?
Give me just a second, please.
Okay.
What's your name again?
Jesse.
Thank you. I could remember your last name and I couldn't get you personally. Okay, so Kanapper?
Yes.
Raisig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Okay, move into executive session at, uh, seven thirty-five. Basically, we use your office.
Mm-hmm.